We will have invocation by Larry Lael, Jr., Vice Commandment and Assistant Chaplain of Marine Corps League at Table Rock. Following that will be pledged allegiance by Lonnie Holler, Commandment of Marine Corps League, Table Rock. And we'll ask you all to stand for both those events.
Father God, first I ask for you to forgive us, being Christians, that we have stood back and allowed leaders of this blessed and great nation to remove your name from the annals of our founding fathers. I ask now that you take your rightful place at the head of this meeting in Jesus Christ's sovereign name. Amen.
It alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of meeting minutes. You have one, two, three, four, five minutes to approve. And since we changed our rules at the beginning of the year, you vote whether you were here or not, so...
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All five, or...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to approve all five. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Item number five is approval of agenda as amended.
Again, motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. We do not have any presentations scheduled. We do have some scheduled public hearings, three of them. First one is Skelly Incorporated, and it will be presented by Scott Dornell of Burke Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. This was a joint project with the city of Morganton. We had applied for a build-in reuse and redevelopment grant from the North Carolina Rural Center. That required the local governments to contribute 5% total for the project. The total amount was $72,000, and the typical arrangement is the city would pay half and the county would pay half, which would be a total of $3,600 split between the city and the county would be $1,800 per entity. No rhyme or reason, but a lot of times we move these grants around. The city will be the applicant one time, which in this case, the city was applicant. Many times, the county's been the applicant. We just recently did one for Contour Enterprises in Hildebrand where they were the applicant. But to distribute the amount of monies around, it's a good working practice for the municipalities to split it. So the city's moved forward with this. The grant's been awarded, but we need to clean this administrative function up and, you know, ask that you support half of that, as the city of Morganton supported the other half.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We will now open for public comments. Anybody who wants to speak to this issue? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion, and we'll ask the board members if they have a question or comment. Any commissioner have a comment? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, a motion to approve the FY 1314 Economic Development appropriation of $1,800 for the county share, the final, of the local match for the North Carolina Rural Center grant awarded to Skelly and the city of Morganton.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those like sign, five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Next one is Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2013-01. It'll be presented by Scott Carpenter, our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This amendment is actually initiated by staff on behalf of one of our citizens. Often, we don't initiate zoning requests for property, but sometimes we get looking at our zoning map, and it turns out that from time to time, we run across a property that when initial zoning came into play, probably should have been zoned something other than what it was zoned. So one of the things that I always try to look at is I try to be reasonable with things, and if somebody has a large investment on their property and they have a commercial building or an industrial building, yet the overlay that went on was all residential or something else, it can make that property useless. And so we try to look at those individually, and that's what this is, this case before you this evening. So this request for the zoning map is to amend one parcel. This parcel was owned by Tom Dixon. Tom has owned this property for over 50 years, and for the record, it's identified as PIN number 2762677892. It's located on Old North Carolina 10, and it was formerly the Iker Post Office was one of several things that it was. And this request is to rezone that property from R2 residential to general business. We did a site analysis, and that site analysis showed that the property has been used for commercial purposes for over 50 years. The subject property is currently zoned R2 residential. The adjacent properties are also zoned R2 residential, with several properties zoned general business in close proximity. One of the adjoining properties is used jointly for residential and commercial purposes, just as this property is. Iker Baptist Church is located to the east of the property across Old North Carolina 10, and if you look at the characteristics of churches, they also exhibit a lot of characteristics that are commercial in nature. That's why they can be zoned either way, or as institutional, or things of that nature. There are several parcels north and west of this property that are already zoned general business, and if you had an opportunity to look at the zoning map, you can see that in reality, that whole node could have been zoned commercial, as a neighborhood commercial or general business to serve the area. There is no, there are no FEMA designated floodplains on the property. The property is located in a WS4 water supply watershed, but that designation won't have any impact on this particular property, because the property was built and developed prior to the state implementing water supply watershed rules. As far as utilities and transportation go, this site does have access, of course, to electrical power. It has public water already available at the site. It does not have sewer, and it operates off of a septic system. There are no transportation issues that would negatively impact development of the site. The site has good all access and good visibility off of Old North Carolina 10. And as far as conformity with the comprehensive plan, we do have to do a statement of zoning consistency. So the 1993 Future Land Use Map identifies this property as developed, and this designation is still appropriate for the area and in keeping with the intent of the designation. The area has a history of commercial as well as residential usage, and all surrounding properties do exhibit similar characteristics. Existing and proposed zoning categories are consistent with the urbanizing character of the area. In conclusion, the, this rezoning is consistent with the 1993 land use plan. Staff does believe that the character of the area will be preserved, and the applicant has stated that he intends to use the property for commercial purposes. No impact to public utilities, or transportation, or services is expected to result from approving this request. A statement of zoning consistency is required with your final decision. No citizens have contacted the planning department in opposition or in support of this request, and staff does recommend approving this request. And the planning board met on May 23, 2013, and they also voted unanimously, 5-0, to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners consider approving this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you, Scott, for that report. We'll open for public comment. We'll open the floor for open comment. Anybody here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open for discussion by county commissioners. Scott, let me ask one quick comment. Back when we did the rezoning of the I-40 corridor...
Yes, sir.
And it was supposed to be a high mile from any direction, did this just not get changed, because that certainly qualifies for that?
I believe the I-40 corridor was an overlay district that put additional requirements on underlying zoning that was in place. So it didn't necessarily change the zoning that was there. It added a new layer of requirements on zoning within a certain distance of Interstate 40 and interchanges.
Any other question from commissioners? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance number 2013-10, amending the Burke County zoning map as presented in ZMA 2013-01.
Thank you, Johnny. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. The third item is also presented by Scott Carpenter, Zoning Text Amendment, ZTA 2013-02.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I'll try to do this item briefly, even though we've spent a dozen hours on this item so far, between the planning board and discussions with the applicant and riding around on the bus, we have come to some conclusion. I just want to point out that this will be coming to you in two parts. The first three recommended additions as an amendment will come before you tonight, and then next month, we'll be bringing an additional three for your consideration. So I just wanted to point that out. The request is to amend Section 1, 1113, group campgrounds and recreation vehicle parks, Section 1113.5, area and site requirements. Mr. Daley is the applicant, and he is requesting an allowance for RV covers, add allowance for decks with covers, and add allowance for decks without covers, and add allowance for storage buildings. Staff believes that the issue of the long-term leasing of camping RV spaces does pose significant challenges to all of us. Many of the existing campgrounds in Burke County have unpermitted structures that have never received zoning and building permits. One of the things that's most obvious is that a lot of building has been going on at the campgrounds without zoning permits and without any building approval. The campgrounds that are older tend not to have any site plan approval or anything. So if you came in today, you'd have to have a minimum of 3,000 square feet per site, and there would be more space between the campers. The other thing that we've noticed is as we've done some preliminary studies on the campgrounds is more than half of them tend to allow long-term leasing of spaces. Those spaces tend to be occupied on the weekends rather than all summer long. We can only find one or two campgrounds that are actually more transient in nature, that people come, like at Silver Creek, and stay on the weekends and then leave. So for the most part, there's a whole lot of desire to stay at the campgrounds or to leave your RV there year-round. And I certainly understand that, and staff understands the desire to do that as well. One of the issues is that the zoning ordinance, the way that it was written, did not provide anything that was directed towards that long-term stay. The zoning ordinance was designed and written for transient type of stays, where people just come and then they leave. So through our dozen hours of discussions and concerns, I'd like to share a few of those concerns with you, and then I'd like to share what the planning board decided to recommend to move forward to you tonight. And then Mr. Daley is here tonight, and he would also like to address the board. So some of the general comments are that the intent of the campground RV park section of the zoning ordinance is currently written is to provide quality design standards for the traveling public. Section 1113.5 does not permit RV covers, decks, or storage buildings on individual camp sites. FEMA regulations state that RVs and campers located within a floodplain must be road-ready at all times. RV covers and decks can make an RV unable to be quickly moved in the case of a flood. And I'd like to stop at that point. And when we were on our bus trip, we recognized that a lot of the structures at some of the campgrounds that were going in, you would not be able to remove that RV very easily in case of a flood, because you'd have to move that RV through four and five structures to get it out. That's how close they are together. So that in itself is really defeating. We've seen all the rains and all the floods threatening some of these low areas. The RV parks tend to build in the floodplains. So they're not allowed in the floodway, but they are allowed in the floodplain, and so that tends to be where they are. And so I just wanted to point out that FEMA regulation. Number five, RV covers and storage buildings are impervious surfaces which increase the flow of stormwater runoff. Number six, long-term leases give the leasing a sense that they have ownership of the lot space and can do what they wish on that space. As a result, there appears to be a belief that zoning and building permits do not apply to individual RV spaces. Many of the existing campgrounds and RV parks do not meet current zoning ordinance standards. There is not sufficient spacing of campsites to accommodate RV covers and decks without creating a potential fire hazard. Some existing campsites are within protected buffers. Many of the existing decks, porches, and covers were built without approvals and permits. Many RV parks have unpermitted and unapproved subterranean waste disposal units in the ground, which we've discussed that as well. But adding structures to the sites that contain these systems requires environmental health to ensure an existing, to issue an existing system report, in addition to the required zoning and building permits. So now we're to the specific request, and the specific request from Mr. Daley is for Section 1113.5, area and site requirements to be amended. Currently, it has an A, a B, a C, and a D, and he wants to add, in addition to that, E, F, G, and H. And I'll go over each one of those. So currently, the only statements in the area and site requirements is A, area of the park shall be no less than three acres; B, density shall be no more than 12 sites per acre; C, each recreation vehicle site shall be at least 3,000 square feet in area; and D, each site shall contain a stabilized vehicular parking pad of packed gravel, marl, paving, or other suitable material. Now, what Mr. Daley would like to add, he would like to add E, RV roofovers to be permitted on individual sites which are built to North Carolina State Building Code. RV roofovers should not be enclosed on any side, front, or rear. Size of cover shall not exceed 24 feet in width and 60 feet in length. Roof pitch shall not exceed 412 in pitch, and clearance from RV shall be 24 inches as measured from the bottom of ceiling joists to the roof of the RV. He would also like to add F, which is adding covers to decks. So decks with covers are permitted on individual sites and shall be built to North Carolina State Building Code. The size of the deck shall not exceed 48 feet in length. The roof pitch is not to exceed 412. Decks with covers shall not be enclosed on any side, front, or rear. Deck and cover shall not be attached to the RV. He would also like to add G, which is an allowance for decks. And he has said that decks are permitted on individual sites and shall be built to North Carolina State Code. Size of the deck shall not exceed 12 feet in width and 48 feet in length. And last, he would like for you to consider, storage buildings not exceeding 48 square feet are permitted on individual site and must be made of plastic or rubber-made material. So we've, we had lots of discussions on the request. We went on for hours, and we weren't able to come to a decision, and the complexity of the issue, we decided to table most of that request, and staff had made an alternate request that we felt should move forward as well. So because of the complexity of all those issues, the planning board met, and they decided to recommend approval of the staffs below recommendations, but to table and reconsider the items dealing with the deck covers and roof covers, following a planned trip to surrounding area campgrounds, and further discussion at their June 27 regularly scheduled meeting. And of course, all of that has taken place, and Mr. Abely went on that fun ride with us as we went around the county. So the following is what the staff has recommended. We've recommended D, B, to clarify what the pad is, and that it read, each site shall contain a stabilized recreational vehicular parking pad consisting of packed gravel. We deleted the word "marl," added asphalt, paving, concrete, or other suitable material. Size of pad shall not exceed 10 feet in width and 40, 45 feet in length. We also added that a single wooden patio deck is allowed, this is E, on individual sites and shall be built to North Carolina State Building Code. Size of deck shall not exceed 10 feet in width, 40, 45 feet in length, and shall be no greater than 12 inches above grade. However, on uneven or slope terrain, the deck may be built level across the front of the RV up to three feet in height. Decks exceeding three feet shall be terraced. A step up to six feet in length is permitted for access to the deck and RV. And we added F, carports are not in allowed use on individual RV sites and shall not be used as covers to RVs. So that was the recommendation by staff. The planning board met, and they did conduct a public hearing on May 23, 2013. After much discussion, the planning board voted to investigate the feasibility of covers over the RVs and decks, and to take a trip out to Camp Lake James to see firsthand the positive and negative aspects of allowing the additional structures. The planning board did agree that the recommended changes proposed by staff should be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration, and the planning board voted 5-0 to recommend that the Burke County Board of Commissioners consider approving Zoning Text Amendment 2013-02, Sections D, E, and F, as proposed by staff.
Thank you, Scott. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Anyone here to speak to this issue?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for hearing this tonight. I'm on board with, with D and F that Scott has just told you about. On E, on the decks that would be allowed, the height limitations I'd like to see removed, if possible. On the RV that I have, the door is at 32 inches, which is about the palm of my hand. And it'd be nice to be able to have a deck about 30 inches high as you're coming out of your RV, as opposed to starting off 12 inches above the ground. And then discussing terracing the deck down if it got over three feet high. It's a lot of that property out there that, that falls pretty steep, and I would, I would ask that we allow decks to be permitted through the building department. We can stick to the, to the size of the deck, but as far as the heights requirement goes, if we could leave that up to the building official, the building department. That's all that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comment or question from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Scott, this is what Chris is talking about right now, is something you're going to look at, and that, I don't want to say phase two, but the second part of this, right?
A mix. We had discussions on the decks that came back, but the planning board decided to move ahead with this recommendation. Originally, the recommendation was to only allow for a patio type of thing outside of the RVs, basically on the ground. Then we'd made some concessions that we allow these additional types of things, so for it to go higher and be terraced. The reason for this, it wasn't arbitrary as it might seem at first glance, was that RVs coming and going from sites are different heights and different lengths, and so we were trying to put some sort of parameter on them to leave them low to the ground. It's a very difficult issue to address or to come up with one standard, but originally, the standard was really for patios, which are close to the ground, to be allowed. And I think that you were provided with a couple of pictures of those types of decks that we were originally looking at.
So what Chris just presented, you haven't decided on that yet, or you have?
We, we have, and what Chris is asking you gentlemen to do is to please reconsider that requirement, because he would like a different requirement. Is that correct, Chris?
I just want the height requirement to be removed.
So planning and zoning is all right with that?
We've already been through that, sir. We recommend the provision that's before you, but I, I do understand what he's asking.
Any other question, Congressman?
Mr. Chairman, Scott, and this may seem trivial. Why did you not decide on one length? Why did you have to go 40 to 45? Could you not come up with just one length for it?
That's a ma, we, we could, we could put 40 or 45. That was just a maximum length that we had found in several ordinances in several states that were between there.
Did you just make it 45 feet, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chris, do you sign long-term leases or these yearly leases? And what happens if, if a person signs a lease, and you can tell me how long it is, do they take all of this stuff with them when they break a lease, or leave when the lease is expired?
They do sign a one-year lease, and then if they're going to leave, we give them the option to sell that deck to somebody else that comes in. That, if they don't do that, they can take the deck with them. If they left the deck there, it would probably be one of the most sought-after lots, you know, because there's an existing deck. On the heights requirement, I, I've had an RV park in McDowell County, and a lot of people do like to have their deck a little bit higher off the ground. It's just a little bit more user-friendly. It's probably easier to inspect if it's a little bit higher off the ground, but I, I do see Scott's view of having it kind of streamlined where they're flat with the, with the ground. I'm, I'm just happy that we might be able to build decks. So it would be nice to, to let the, in my, in my opinion, to let the building department tell you how, how you could build your deck, just like at your house, and just put size requirements on it. requirements on it.
So as, as it is drawn here, basically you're going to have the, the potential to have steps going off the deck up into the RV versus steps coming up onto the deck and the, and the deck being at door height on the RV?
That's right. That's right. I'd prefer to have steps coming up to the deck and then go and walk into your RV.
So you're suggesting have it, have it level with, with the bottom of the door going in?
Yes.
But the planning and zoning hasn't discuss, I, they've discussed that, but they haven't, uh, said yay on that, right?
Have not recommended it.
We did not, even though we went through a lot of discussion, uh, about it. We were concerned of that people pulling out these and leaving them, that the next guy in would not be able to utilize it without other problems. Because if you have the deck there and it's low, you can always add steps up to the door. And you can still add steps down to the ground on the unevenness of, you see, up to six feet long if you're playing.
Well, that was going to be my next question, Scott. Are we going to allow portable steps of cement type or some, some fabricated type to go into the trailer if we keep, uh, keep it level on the ground?
Yes, sir.
If, if you had a, a deck that was, say, 30 inches off the ground and you had another RV that came in that their door was only 24 inches, um, y, you could cut that deck down if you had to, but we've, we've never had that problem with that.
Chair will recognize Jack. He had a question.
This is directed both of you. Don't, don't you see a safety issue with the height here? I'm, I'm speaking in reference to elderly folks walking up steps from the ground as opposed from the, from the deck up to their door. It would seem to me that, uh, it would be easier if, if the deck was even up leveled with the door. So the, I wonder whoever could easily walk from the deck into the house without climbing stairs. And especially bad weather, it would be a, a safety issue with me, I would say.
I feel the same way about that.
I guess I need more clarification, Mr. Carroll, because, uh, if it's, they're going to have to go up steps one way or the other to get into the RV if the deck is raised four and five feet.
Well, if I'm going upstairs, I, I have stairs I have to climb all the time. I'm getting the age, I don't like to climb stairs and my wife does it either. But if you're coming from the ground, you have a handrail that's, can support you to come up to your deck. But now if you just have steps going from your deck at ground level up to your door, I don't know.
And of course, uh, with ADA, we'd make all reasonable accommodations for any handicapped access that's, uh, necessary on any deck. It's just required and so that's what we do.
So you could make an exception to that if someone, uh, approached you on that?
Yes, sir. We make those exceptions all the time.
Okay.
So would a handrail be required for those steps coming up into the RV if they were coming from a deck, say, two or three steps up?
I believe it's required if it's more than three feet above the, uh, ground. If, once you get above three feet, then you have to have a rail around the deck as well as a handrail coming up to the deck.
I'm talking about if, if the deck remains low and you wind up with two or three steps to come up into the RV.
Right.
Could a handrail be required for those steps?
Not if it's less than three feet.
Plus, most RVs have a handrail on, by the door.
But when you're use, you're using your deck, also remember, if you're cooking out there, i, it's a lot easier to go in and out of the RV during the evening if you're level than going up and down steps. It's just more user-friendly if we're going to build a deck. Personally, I don't see the problem with having it flush with the door.
Any other question or comment?
I, I just want to thank, uh, them for all their work they're putting in this cri, that campground, that Benfield Landing, that's been there probably at least 50 years and, uh, there's a lot of violations. And Chris took that thing over and he's did a lot of improvements and of course, Scott is working closely with them and, uh, I just appreciate them working together, but they're not the only camp, that's not the only campground. Scott's taken on a whole lot of work with, uh, a lot of campgrounds in Burke County that nobody's ever touched before. And he's exactly right. People rent a lot. They think they can do anything to that lot. And most of it's done without code or following, uh, code on, on these things or getting a permit.
A question aside from the issue, how did we fare with all the rain? Did we have any damage in these parks and recreation areas?
I don't believe we did with the last rains. We did, of course, with the previous rains of six inches, but I think that the last rains, we, uh, escaped pretty well with that.
Any other question or comment? Chair will...
Um, as far as these decks being built in the 50 feet from the lake, in the buffer area, in the flood, in the flood plain, they would, they're, they're not allowed in the flood plain. So any decks that we're considering are going to have to be outside the 50-foot buffer. Those are the RVs that need to be able to be removed, you know, in the event of a flood. So these decks would not be in, in that area.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, a motion to adopt ordinance number, uh, 213-11, amending the Burke County zoning ordinance as it relates to, uh, ZTA 213-01.
Any other question or comment? You have heard the motion? Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, John.
Item eight is informal public comment. Madam Clerk, did we have anybody sign up?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have one person, Mr. Steve Shoberly. And he also provided a handout to the board that was presented earlier to you.
Members of the board, I received my tax bill on Friday. Doing the math, I discovered that my taxes had increased 18.57% in spite of a 7.31% decrease in my valuation. While I'm not opposed to a tax increase to fund essential services, I do have a problem with you reaching for my wallet with one hand while wasting money with the other. At the very least, when you're wasting money, you could waste it in Burke County, whether taxpayers could benefit. However, the DSS contract to handle terminations of parental rights fails on all counts. I've given the clerk copies of the documents so that you could have a copy. Why does this contract exist in the first place? As you can see from the hiring notice for DS Staff Attorney One position, the duties include representation and preparation of all legal documents. Since January 1st, 2012, DSS has had two staff attorney positions. Having performed those duties myself for 26 years, I can tell you that a contract for someone to handle specifically termination of parental rights cases is unnecessary and wasteful. Two staff attorneys can handle all the duties at DSS without any additional staff. Assuming for the sake of argument that an additional contract were necessary, wouldn't it have been appropriate and prudent to follow a formal or informal bidding process? I know of at least six local attorneys who could have performed the duties at a substantial savings to the county, but no bidding process whatsoever was followed. Instead, the DSS director awarded an out-of-county friend with the contract. The contract calls for $115 per hour plus mileage. Since the contractor lives in Mills River in Henderson County, each round trip costs the taxpayers of Burke County $82.49. If you examine his billing documents, the taxpayers of Burke County are called upon to pay $115 per hour for services rendered or for in and out, nothing further appearing. Two prepositions upon an otherwise blank page do not an appropriate bill for legal services make. These may be the poorest excuses for legal services bills that I've seen in my entire 31-year legal career. Moreover, the performance of the contractor hasn't met statutory standards in at least one respect. A termination of parental rights hearing was held on April 26, 2013. The juvenile court required that the order from that hearing be prepared, signed, and filed on or before May 26, 2013. That, that process was not completed until last Monday, 43 days late. The taxpayers of Burke County deserve better service for their tax dollars. All of this raises the following questions. How did this contract get approved without a sen, any semblance of a fair bidding process? Why is the payment being made without more specific descriptions of the services rendered? Why aren't statutory timeframes being met by the contractor?
Is this time over?
Yes, sir.
Give you fif, give you 15 seconds to wrap it up.
I call upon this, the, this board to terminate this contract as soon as possible. Thank you.
Does the board have a question, comment?
I would just comment. I'm sure we have a lot of qualified attorneys in Burke County. I don't know why we're going to Mills River to hire an attorney. That seems ridiculous to me. We, we got a lot of attorneys that could use the work here in Burke County. It wouldn't have to be paid travel time. I'm a hundred percent opposed to that.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, we'll move to item number nine, the sin agenda. And with the revised agenda, you have 13, and we'll recognize our county manager, Ryan Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, your first item is designation of voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference. Item number two, acceptance of grant process reports submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government to the Department of Community Assistance. Number three, appointments to Regional Aging Advisory Committee. Number four, reappointments to the Morganton Planning Board, ETJ. Number five, appointment of member, for member to Child Fatality Prevention Team. Number six, request a surplus ambulance. Number seven, request a surplus county property. Number eight, tax office EMS collections report for May 2013. Number nine, tax office release and refund report for May 2013. Number 10, tax office tax collection report for June 2013. Number 11, Board of Commissioners appointment of moderator for Drexel Booster Charger election. Number 12, County Manager Clerk Resolution to authorize the use of electronic advertisement for contracts subject to GS 143-129 and the use of electronic advertisement for disposal of property by elections auction pursuant to GS 160A-270. And item 13 was added. Today I've received information about this needing to be acted upon, and that is the reappointment of the County Manager to the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Board operating as Greenway Public Transportation. That concludes your consent items.
Thank you. Any question or comment? If, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
If I might take the liberty just to, uh, inform you, because I, I have talked to a couple of people today about the taxes and Danny says you have to apply for special consideration before the tax bill goes out. Is that correct, Danny?
About June 1st.
Ah, June 1st. Yeah. Just thought you might need to use that in some of your discussions. Any other comment or question about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is printed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. We move to items for decision. Number one, uh, Courthouse HVAC renovation project bid award. That'll be brought to us by Carson Fisher, General Service Director.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. I have a short report to give to you. Uh, when we had our bid opening on July the 10th, we only had two bidders in attendance and two bids that were submitted. Because of the fact that this was a formally bid process, we're required to have three bids to be able to open and review those bids. We did have a mandatory pre-bid conference at the courthouse on July 1. We did have four contractors in attendance at that time. Two of those contractors had indicated that because of the holiday week that, uh, and a lot of places closing, that they weren't, uh, having sufficient luck with getting quotes from subcontractors. So that's the reason we ended up only having two bids. However, we have re-advertized the project. A second, uh, mandatory pre-bid conference was held this morning. I wasn't, uh, available for that, but I understand that there was more interest in, in attendance at this mandatory pre-bid. And we are going to be accepting, uh, bids a second time next Monday at 3:00. Because of the fact that we have already advertised and received bids once, but did not get the required number of bids, we will be able to open with whatever number of bids we have. Now, obviously, the biggest question is whether, uh, it's an acceptable bid or not, but that is the reason that you have been requested, uh, to recess this meeting at the end and reconvene on Tuesday, I believe, the 23rd, to discuss those bids. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carson. Any question? No action needed at this point, so we will do that with our motion for recess.
Thank you.
Item number two, allocate emergency management performance grant funds to special revenue account. And that's presented by Mike Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I come for you tonight and request a $14,874.03 to be put into a special account to help pay for, uh, maintenance of equipment and training of personnel to be used, uh, in the emergency management office. We procured the equipment through Homeland Security money over the past 10 years, and those funds have now dwindled down to almost nothing. And we'd like to have the, uh, $14,000 put in that special account to pay for those funds. I sent an email to, uh, Madam Clerk and she sent it out to the Commissioners, I think, on, I sent it to Mike Cook, our Western Branch Director, and, uh, asking him about the, uh, the EMPG funds. And, uh, again, those funds, he said, were obligated through the MOAs. Uh, they have been met when we received that check and it can be used by the county to continue enhancing our emergency management program.
Thank you, Mike. Any question or comment?
Um, Mr. Chairman, you had asked me to, to look into the question as to whether you were creating, uh, any troublesome pres, precedents by doing this? And I have reviewed that situation legally and, uh, to, to, as a backstop with the Institute of Government folks. And that would not create, um, any problem for future this board or future boards concerning segregating those funds.
All right. Thank you. Any other question or comment? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the creation of a special revenue account for the Farm Marshal Emergency Management Department totaling $14,874.03 to purchase materials, equipment, or training as needed with remaining funds to roll over from year to year.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose the light sign, five to zero, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While Mike is here, would you like him to give you just a brief recount of the storm damage that happened this past week, weekend?
Yes, I think that'd be acceptable to the board.
Okay. On, uh, Friday night approximately twen, uh, 10:30 PM that evening, uh, Western Burke County received approximately five inches of rain in a very short period of time. Uh, most of you is familiar with the bottom drop, what they call bottom drop area on Highway 70. Uh, it actually got into a trailer park and we actually had to go in and remove some, uh, residents from their homes with a swift water rescue team. Uh, that area out there, uh, we had one building that was completely flooded out on the, uh, I guess it'd be the south side of 70. Uh, it used to be the Mark IV Club, Mr. Simpson, our younger days. It used to be the Mark IV Club, Mr. Simpson, in our younger days, I don't know what it is now. But it's a vacant building, but anyway, it was flooded out completely. Also undermined an 8-inch water line that was ruptured, Brentwood Water. That is also being put back in place as of today. Highway 70 is open back up. They have, the problem was getting dry dirt to put back in, so we ended up putting a lot of riffraff in that area to get the bank built back up where it undermined the road. But Highway 70 is open. Ceramic tile drive going into Ice River Springs is open one lane. They hauled 27 loads of tandem dirt in there Saturday evening to get one lane open where we could get trucks in to Ice River Springs. They also had a 12-inch water line that was ruptured there, and that has been put back in place. Cosby Road was washed out at Cosby's Body Shop there at the creek. As of yesterday morning, it's been repaired completely, so Cosby Road is open completely. The only road that we have inaccessible right now is a private drive or private road called Log Hall Lane off of Mount Olive Church Road. It affects three homes. One of the homeowners actually owned a field that connected to McDowell Independence Church Road, and they was able to bush hog a road in and out to get the cars out to begin with, and they're in the process of putting a footbridge in at that creek to handle it. We had two homes that the basement walls actually caved in. One of them is extensive damage. One of them, I think, is going to be repairable. It's questionable yet on the one at Jamestown Road. A problem with that is if they consider it flood, you know, most time insurance doesn't cover flooding, so that's the issue there. We had a lot of downed trees in the Bird Road, Hopeo Road, Probst Road, Ridge Creek Drive. I think y'all received comments from the Ridge Creek Drive area back in May where their road had washed out. It held up, but not good, so they've got some more work to go back in there. We checked on it yesterday, so, you know, it's passable right now. Questionable whether or not we're going to send fire trucks in there, but they still have a track hoe on site, so I'm sure they'll be putting some dirt and stuff back in that area. We had approximately four to five homes with trees on. As far as I know, all those trees have been removed, so that's where we was at. If anybody wants to go see the damage or whatever, just give me a call, and we'll be glad to take you out to those areas.
Okay. Thank you. Question? Very good. Item number three from General Services, reclassification of solid waste recycling technician position. Carson?
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. This request is to consider reclassifying a solid waste recycling tech position, which is a pay grade 17 at the landfill, to a heavy equipment operator position, pay grade 16. Person that's in this position is resigning effective this Friday. The job description for the heavy equipment operator position more closely matches the responsibilities that are actually performed, and in addition, there's two other employees that work in similar capacities at the landfill that are classified as heavy equipment operators. Reclassification of this position from a pay grade 17 to a 16 will save approximately $1,000 to $2,000 per year in salaries. Be glad to answer any questions any of the board members may have.
Question from commissioners? Comment from commissioners? A motion from commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the reclassification of the solid waste recycling technician position from pay grade 17 to a heavy equipment operator position at pay grade 16.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be reports. I believe we started to the right last time. We'll start with Madam Clerk this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't have any announcements tonight. Thank you.
No comment.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize the Brentwood Water Corporation. Troy's out there representing their board and other duties tonight, but they did a yeoman's job along with our fire marshals, who spent all night and all day, and our county manager going out. When I went up 70 and down the bottom drop, it was nasty. A lot of people had a lot of damage, and Brentwood's to be commended for getting that water back on to those people, and I think we were told this morning they hooked the water hose up to a fire hydrant so one person could get some, have water for their homes, so getting some free water. But Troy, y'all did a great job, so tell your board to commend those guys that worked for you, that they did fantastic, and we just had a well response here in the county as we expect from our fire marshal. Couldn't expect any less from you, Mike, and we do appreciate it.
I would ditto that, and I would add happy birthday to Johnny. He turns a year older this week, this past week. The other thing I would have is, since you've designated me as your voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I would encourage you, if there's issues or comments or anything you want said on behalf of our board, if you'll please advise me, I'd be glad to represent you in that manner when I attend that meeting. Wayne?
I would just ask you to remember Jeff Morris, who had a heart attack, the city manager of Aldis, and I don't know how severe it is, but I think he'll be back in town either tonight or tomorrow. But he, something, a guy that's really in really good shape, but never expected, but he was bicycling in Yackenville when it happened, so you just remember him and his prayers, in your prayers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've got some pictures of some capital projects that were completed for the budget year that ended June 30th, and our IT director's going to assist me with showing you. This is the doors to the new remodeled Register of Deeds office there at the old tax building, I believe it is. There's a picture looking into the lobby, and I'm trying to let you convey the amount of space that she has and the flow and the ease for our citizens to come in and transact business there in the register deeds and access other documents and things. If you go to the next slide, this is a picture looking back, showing you've got some cubby holes or envelope holes there, and Libby has two offices, office spaces there. And this is in the back room, showing you some of that area, and looking back up towards the front door from the back corner of the second room. And this is some of their office space from the backside. Again, in the back room there where people can go in and look up records. And there's some, again, from another angle, and there's another room that's there available to them for the storage of records. Here we go to Parks and Recreation. You know that we've moved them over to the Conference Center Building. And this is just looking into the first office space there where Debbie Smith is. This is, I believe, Treg's office, and then there's Gary Crego's office space. Different pictures, views. There's the hallway. There's the conference room, and they have folks that they have been having come in to visit them, do quilting in there a day or two a week. And here's the HRC building. These are the new chillers that are sitting on the outside of the building that you can see, which is quite substantial, but that's a good-sized building. This is one of the water pumps. That's Keith Ferriss there on the right. By the way, he's on vacation this week, so he can't really give you the technical details of the system there. And you have two pumps for the chillers, and back over on the wall, you see those two gentlemen. They're putting in, I guess, the electrical panel to receive the wiring and things for the generator that will be serving that building. And here are some of the controls that keep an eye on the different pumps and operating them. Again, that's just a gauge that shows you the energy usage for one of the pumps, and I have a picture, I guess, of the other one. But these are variable speeds, so a lot of the old systems, they were either on or they were off, and when they were on, they're running at 100%. By having the variable speed equipment, it meets the need, but it's not drawing any more electricity than it's needed to, to get it to cooling. So, that should result in a savings to us and also prolong the life of the equipment there. And that is the size of the chiller. That, it's taller than a person. That thing goes about 12, 14 feet up from the bottom to the top. This is a shelter that we've built and fenced for our emergency command post and some other equipment that's used to support that. You're looking at the fencing, and that mobile command post, as I understand, was about a million-dollar asset, and it's been sitting outside and then just getting beaten up on by the elements, and we've got it under shelter now. This gives you a little bit better picture of that.
Where is this, Brian?
This is back off of an old road near the sheriff's.
Sheriff's office.
And next door to that is where we fenced in for the recreation folks to keep their equipment for the cost of that and the benefits that you're getting. I think it's just good, good money well spent. This is the front picture of the senior center here in Morganton, and the ambulance is there. It's now serving. They had to pour the concrete driveway and build a shelter over it and established an electrical plug-in for them to keep the, I guess, the engine warmed in the wintertime and the other systems in the summertime cooled to maintain a proper temperature for medicines that are contained in the ambulances. And that's the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one last thing to mention to you. Brian Graves, as you may know, the reporter for the News Herald, is going to be leaving us and going back to the paper in Albemarle called the SNAP, Stanley News and Press. He came up here, and he was so enlightened by the people of Morganton and Burke County that he's now going to be elevated to a more prestigious job in Stanley County, so I'm expecting a thank-you note from my counterpart in Stanley County and the folks down there, but this is probably his last meeting with us. Okay, all right. Well, we'll be glad to have you one more time. Thank you for what you've done.
Derek?
I usually don't have any comments, but today I have two. First of all, in the public comments area of our meeting tonight, I just wanted to point out that the Board of Social Services has control over their contracts, and the county, the county really does not. So, it's not really an issue for the county, although it's certainly something that anyone is welcome to bring before the board and discuss with the board. The second thing, I just wanted to advise the board of the passing last night of Wayne Pollard. Wayne's a longtime alderman of the Town of Glen Alpine and longtime mayor of the Town of Glen Alpine. He's my Little League baseball coach and just a great asset to the Town of Glen Alpine and Burke County, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Currently, we have the following vacancies on our boards and committees. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, one vacancy exists for a four-year term. You do have to reside in the ETJ of the Hickory City Boundary in Burke. We have seven vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, three vacancies on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. You may have seen the ad that I ran in Sunday's paper announcing that applications are needed for these two boards. One vacancy exists on the Council of Aging for an at-large position. Currently, three vacancies exist on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, but we have applications for two of those positions, and those will be on your August agenda. We're still looking for a person, a student under the age of 18, who is also a member of the State Youth Council. BDI has one vacancy for an at-large position. The term is for three years. The Child Protection, Child Futility, we fill that position tonight. We also filled the Morganton Planning Board ETJ appointments. However, they still need two applicants for their Board of Adjustment. Folks need to reside in the ETJ area of Morganton, and a map is included in the packet. And one vacancy exists on the County's Board of Equalization and Review. Applications are available on the website or by calling the county manager's office.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a need to go into a short closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation and to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss economic development and discuss personnel matters as authorized by NCGS 143.318.11A, 3, 4, and 6. So, could I have a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk.